I'll open the January 7th, 2021, meeting of the Heart Board of Selectmen and Board of Health at 6:30. And in attendance is Mark Cullen, Chair, Josh Antum, and Jean Canty, and administrator. First item on the agenda is the coronavirus update. Deb and John, you're going to give us some information on statistics and testing. And Tony, I think you're going to talk about the the funding update on this. And then we had a discussion, I know that I was in with a number of regional people. And Deb, you were on that meeting, and Tony, so we can discuss that too. So why don't I turn it over to you, Deb?
Okay, so I will be happy to update everybody with our statistics. Although I don't think the statistics are going to make anybody very happy. The weekly report that came out today that tracks the number of cases for the past two weeks, this would be from 12/20 to so from 12/20 to January 2nd. In those four, in that 14 day reporting period, we had 35 new cases. Our current, our current case as of this afternoon is 161. So all I can say is that we get, you know, the cases that we see coming in right now is the direct response to infectious periods around the Christmas holiday. So we're starting to see the numbers go up, as everybody, I think, expected them to. The age group that we have in town now, we have kids as young as one, and we have adults as old as 80. So it's not really just concentrating on one particular age group. What I am seeing is a lot of exposure in household clusters. So if somebody in a household tests positive, and then maybe everybody else tests negative right at the same time. What we're seeing is maybe a week or seven, eight days later, other people in that family will convert to positive. Because, as you remember, the incubation period can be up to two weeks. So we have some families that have, you know, maybe four or five people. And every time a new person in the family converts to positive, that extends the quarantine for the rest of the family. So it's, it's been a journey, I think. You know, I think the only thing left for us to do really at this point is to just move forward and vaccinate as many people as we can. Because none of the other efforts that we really seem to have put into place have been able to stop the spread. If anything else, the spread is really just increasing everywhere. So those are our current statistics.
Thank you. Deb, does the, Deb, does the testing ramp these numbers up?
Well, I think, I think that's true. So we had, in the last 14 days of that reporting period, we had Nahat residents, 740 tests. I mean, I think that's a pretty significant amount of tests for two weeks. So I think it's a couple of things. I think the more tests you do, you know, the more positives you're going to find. But I also think that this post-holiday, you know, two-week period that we're in, I mean, you could see, you know, there was a lot of movement, a lot of traveling, a lot of people just trying to, you know, go to New Hampshire, do a little skiing, a lot of people in the airports. And even though people are really, you know, when I called them, some of the people said, you know, they've done everything that they're supposed to do, and yet they're testing positive. Maybe they've been to the grocery store, that might be their only, you know, when you interview them, to try to, to try to really figure out. It's really hard sometimes because people really don't have any idea.
Well, I think you're right, Deb. The sooner we can get this vaccine, the better off we're all going to be. It can't come too soon. John, do you want to, before we get on to testing update and funding, do you have anything to comment on?
I do not, no, but I'm available if anybody has any questions.
Okay.
Hey, speaking, speaking of vaccines, is there any kind of an update as to when we're likely to see that?
Yeah. So actually, Jean, we're going to start on Tuesday in Lynn for the Nahat and Lynn first responders, which would be the fire, the police, the EMTs. And I'm going to actually meet tomorrow with the Lynn Board of Health to, to help set, we're going to go to the test, to the vaccination site. And, you know, look at the logistics and make sure that it's ready for next week.
Oh, good.
Thanks, thanks, Jean, for asking. Tony, you want to talk about the testing and the, and the funding?
Yes. I, one thing, one challenge that, you know, I think many people on the, on the call and in the community are aware that we notified folks that we had to suspend testing. Nobody on this call, nobody on the Board of Health, or the health nurse, myself, or the health agent, you know, wants to do that. We, we all are working actively to try to find ways to continue local free testing. We all agree that when you're, when dealing with a virus that is mostly asymptomatic cases, the, one of the best tools we can use to prevent transmission are the quarantine guidelines, which we capture so many. And Deb, I don't know if, if you said it already or not, or if you want to expand on what I'm saying, but we capture so many asymptomatic cases through the local testing. And, and that's because it's free and it's convenient. You know, if you don't have any symptoms and you have, you know, really no requirement to go get a test, you're not going to drive, you know, to a, to a testing site and pay for it out of your pocket just for the heck of it. When it's right down the street and it's free, you might do that. And then we might capture that asymptomatic case and put them in quarantine before it transmit, unknowingly, before they transmit to other people. So that, you know, local free testing is a huge element to helping prevent the transmission. And so we are working really actively to try to find additional funding sources to keep that going. We're advocating to our state delegation and our federal delegation. One of our, one of the, the reason why we had to stop is we, like many other communities, were provided CARES Act funding to use for services like testing. And just like many other communities, we were acting under the guidance that that funding was use or lose by the end of 2020. We had to spend that money by the end of last year, otherwise we lost it. It wasn't, you know, so by December 30th, it wasn't until December 29th, after, just, just after the federal government passed the next COVID relief bill, did we get notice from the state that the deadline to spend that money had been extended a year. However, like many other communities, we were, we were trying to get that money spent so we didn't lose it. So the, the most recent legislation passed by the federal government, while it extended the deadline to spend the money, it didn't provide us any new funds. So, you know, we're hopeful that we will be seeing additional funds. There is some money in that new bill for school-related coronavirus expenses and services. And we're hoping that there'll be additional funding to, to, to us and, you know, our neighboring communities. But many of our neighboring communities are suffering from the same challenge and are, you know, converting to a hybrid testing offer where they're staffing the testing, but the cost of the test is passed on to the resident. While that would be our, you know, probably our last step, you know, ideal again, being free and being convenient is when you're going to capture folks who don't know that they're even a positive case. So before I get to the next part of that, Deb, do you want to expand on anything I just said?
No, I absolutely agree with everything you said. And I don't know if people heard the robo-call that came out tonight from the Swam Scott Board of Health. I don't know why, I got it at my house. But they talked about, there will be continued testing there, six days a week, the same schedule that they've had, but that each person that goes for testing will have to pay $70. And you will have to pre-register on the Swam Scott website. So I'm assuming, Tony, that that means the Nahat people, Nahat residents could still do that, but they would have to pay the $70.
That's correct. We're still working out the final details there because I believe Swam Scott might be staffing that test site. Where, you know, we're, we don't have the resources that they have to do that. But I think that they would extend that over to Nahat as well. So, but we do have some good news. Mark, would you like me to make this announcement, or would you like?
Yeah, well, like, like you said, we're looking at ways of trying to, to fund this and keep it going. And we are fortunate that the group has stepped up and it's going to allow us to keep it funded for the next couple of weeks, at least one day a week. And that's the, through the Nahat Preservation Trust. And I see that Emily is on board, who is the president of the trust. We've had a conversation earlier today, Tony, I spoke with you, that, you know, maybe we can't do two days a week, but we can certainly probably finance one day a week. So Emily, if you could bring us up to speed on that generous offer?
Well, I can try. When we saw the notice of the ending of the funding, we thought maybe that was a cry for support. So luckily, we had a donor who was getting ready to make a donation, who was willing to put part of that donation earmarked for testing. We went to Mark's desk if that could be done. And he said he would talk to Tony, and so here we are. It looks like it's going to happen, the last word I had. And it would only be one day a week, but it could, if we would do it for two times, that's what we have the money for. And we thought it would be better to separate those days, not do them both the same week, but to have one in the empty week and the other one in the next week. And then we would be closer to the finding more funding, maybe. That would be a good thing. So we're really happy to do this. We're excited to produce this for the community. And, and we're grateful to our donor and to the selectmen and to Tony and all the people who can make this happen.
Thank you so much, Emily, and, and your organizations. You've done so much for the town over the years, and this is just another example of stepping up. Tony?
It's extremely generous. I can't, you know, I thank you so much. I mean, it, as Deb mentioned, you know, one day of testing could potentially prevent, you know, a significant amount of transmission. So, you know, we are, we will put it out to the public tomorrow. But due to your, to the donors' generosity, we'll be able to have testing this Saturday from 1 o'clock to 3 o'clock at the church parking lot, as well as the following Saturday from 1 o'clock to 3 o'clock. I also want to announce that Cataldo Ambulances, while we can't subsidize this effort, they do offer in-home testing. If you go to cataldoambulance.com, it is, I believe it's $150. But if you are, if you are, you know, if there's someone in the home that can't get, isn't exactly mobile or can't get out of the house, or for whatever reason, for the convenience of having them come to your house, you can go on to cataloambulance.com and schedule an in-home visit. It does cost $150, but we'll put that out tomorrow.
Tony, is that 150 per household or per individual?
Um, I think that, I think that's per test. But I don't know, maybe you can work a deal with them.
Well, Jean and Josh, before we move on to the next, do you have anything to say?
I just, I would just say that obviously that's a very generous donation, but even more so, just a very thoughtful and civic-minded gesture. So greatly appreciated.
And likewise, Emily, the organizations stepping way out in front on this, thank you.
Well, we're, we're happy to do it. And we just hope that a lot of these tests come back negative. So wear your mask.
Yeah.
I think you have to pay more for a negative test.
Yes, right.
Tony, you want to talk a little bit about the, the regional call that you, Deb, and I were on last week?
Uh, yeah, so, you know, it's, it's, this, the turn of the new year is honestly one of the most challenging moments of this entire pandemic. I think Deb Murphy will agree with, you know, the recent surge that we're experiencing, the, you know, the, the funding essentially being exhausted, the vaccine distribution starting. And, and it's, and it's, it's just been very tough trying to find new ways to educate and, you know, really get folks to take on the responsibility of doing what's right and protecting themselves and others to help prevent the transmission. I think everybody is exhausted at this time. And, you know, after the holidays, it, it, we really did see a major spike. And if you're watching the news, you know, it's out there even beyond just our call that our regional hospitals are approaching critical capacity. And when we're, when we're dealing with an issue like that, it's no longer a COVID issue. It's a healthcare issue at this point. Anybody, any one of us could be in need of, of healthcare at our local regional hospitals at any moment. And when they are filled because of COVID, that's going to affect the level of care that you receive. So we're, you know, the contact tracing only goes so far. It captures a significant amount of transmission points, but not all of it. And I think that there's, there's a significant amount of that happening outside of areas that government has control of. Household gatherings, like Deb mentioned, holiday gatherings, outdoor activity, indoor activity that, you know, the government can't require you to wear a mask in your house, you know. But unlike the requirements that they, that we can impose upon our local restaurants or retail stores with capacity limits and, and things of that nature. So, you know, I think that the call that we had was a, a, put upon us from our local hospitals, reaching out to Essex County officials because Essex County has been hit harder than any other county in the, in the state. And they're calling on us to roll back the reopening phase to eliminate indoor dining, close down gyms, close down sports because the, because of the critical capacity issue that they're experiencing. You know, it's, Nahat's in a little bit of a different place than some of our neighboring communities. While we, you know, while it's very real here, and the spread is very real here, Lynn, right across the causeway, is experiencing a legitimate health crisis. And so is our other communities like in Salem and, and Beverly and Gloucester and Danvers. And, and they also have a lot more commercial business than we do. So it, it becomes another challenge from their perspective. So, you know, after, you know, hours of conversation and going back and forth, we ultimately decided that we would hold off on rolling back or stepping in front of the governor as a county and rolling back beyond what he has decided to do. And we put out a joint statement really urging that area, that's the education and education, to try to, to hit the area that we don't have control of, that, that, those household gatherings. So you'll see a lot of that on the news, you'll see a lot of that in your local papers about, you know, everybody kind of needing to take some responsibility and step up and, and do their part to help prevent overcrowding in our regional hospitals. And of course, we also talked about reconvening in the next week or so to potentially, if it gets worse, or if the governor doesn't roll back the reopening in, in response to a worsening condition at the hospitals, we may still do it. As of right now, we're, we're really pushing the educational piece, but it's possible that, you know, our county may step in front of the government, governor and, and roll the reopening phase back to Phase 2 before the rest of the Commonwealth.
I think that was a good description of our phone call. Deb, I, I know you were on that phone, that, that meeting with us. Do you have anything to add? You're muted.
No, um, no, I think, I think Tony did a nice job summarizing it. I thought it was very interesting to hear what the other communities that have so many more businesses and restaurants than we do. But the truth of the matter is about the hospitals, we have a couple of cases even here in Nahat that are in the hospital right now. And they were brought to Salem Hospital, but they couldn't stay there. They had to transfer them to Boston because they didn't have any room for them. So it's true. I mean, it's, it is critical right now. And, you know, I know they're setting up those area hospitals and at two different sites, the Fields Hospitals. But people need to, you know, take more responsibility, I think. And just like Emily said, you know, keep your mask on, social distance, and do not, do not mix with other households. I mean, I see it all the time, even around here. I mean, there's still parties going on. And, and you know it's people from all different households. It's not, you know, just your bubble, so to speak. But I think people maybe are just getting tired because it's been so long. And, and sports too, you know, we see hockey seems to be one of those sports. One of the mothers told me yesterday, it's because they researched it and the, the air is so cold in the rink that it settles down instead of rising up because it's warm. And that's around the area where everyone's breathing in spite of the fact that they have masks on. I don't know if that's true. But I just know that every time we investigate a new case, there's, you know, there's something else that you're learning. And we have some very sick people right now, I will say that. And I just wish that, you know, there was more of a sense of everybody just trying to really, you know, protect, protect themselves and protect other people.
Can I expand a little bit more, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
You know, just to add another perspective to the conversation that we're having with these other communities that you may not think about. It's not, you know, the, we also talked a lot about that industry and the impacts that these decisions have on the restaurants. And, and, and we, you know, the, we realize or we see that closing restaurants down, you know, for people who want to socialize, you know, it may push them into the households. It may push them into group gatherings, you know, that aren't in a restaurant. You know, it's, it's, the other important thing too is, you know, the grocery stores, you know, there's so many people in, in the grocery stores at the same time and at the retail markets, especially around the holidays, there was too. So that was a lot of stuff that we talked about. But I guess I would say that, you know, we really want to promote, we want to promote takeout from your local restaurants to help them survive this because they are unfortunately falling into that sector that the government can restrict in capacity limits or completely. So, you know, support your local restaurants, get takeout, you know, tip them as if you were sitting at the table. They need help, they need to survive this. They're doing their part to help permit, prevent the transmission. So it's challenging when we're in these conversations about, you know, balancing the two, the two efforts. Obviously, public health is number one. But we don't want to fall short on just saying, stay home, you know, order takeout, support your local businesses. And, and that, and that's part of this whole thing. We're all in it together is, is part of what we talked about.
Thank you, Tony. Thanks, Deb. Like I said, I was at, in that meeting myself. And I was impressed with how all the communities in the county were approaching this. And it is true that, you know, this, this virus doesn't recognize boundaries. And we need, not only do we need a regional approach, we need a statewide approach and probably even a federal approach here. But individual communities making their own individual decisions isn't working. We have to go to Lynn, we have to go to Swam Scott. And people in those communities have to go to other communities. So, you know, we really need to take a look at a regional approach at this, at the very least. I know, Tony, that at some point it may require a vote from the town's Board of Health. And that would require a meeting of sorts, I would imagine. I, I can say as one member of the Board of Health that I am supportive of this effort. And if we have to meet to vote on it, then I'm willing to do that. And Josh and Jean, you can, you can chime in too.
Yeah, of course, I'd be willing to meet anytime. And as Tony pointed out, it's, it's less of a sacrifice for the businesses in Nahat. I think it really only affects the Tides and maybe the Knights of Columbus. Still not great for them, but at least Tides has a takeout service that we could still take advantage of. But so much more of a sacrifice for the communities that, like Deb said, that have a lot of restaurants and gyms and that sort of thing. But, yep, keep our finger on the pulse and ready to make a change whenever we need to.
Okay, I just wanted Tony to know when he's in these conversations that although he may have to come back and get a follow-up vote, that he is speaking on behalf. And I think we're all supportive of, of these efforts.
I've reached out to Mike over at the Tides as well and kept him informed of the conversations that are happening. So that line of communication is open and he understands and is, you know, is ready to do his part, you know. So like I said, support Tides, support, support local, support Lynn, support your local places and, because they're doing their part too. They've had a challenging year.
Thanks, Tony, and thanks, Deb. Thanks, Tony, and thanks, Deb. Um, okay, I have a few community announcements uh with uh winter parking ban is in effect, as everybody knows, through March twentieth, goes from twelve AM to six AM. Um, the DPW um is still seeking um operators with equipment to assist in um snow removal. If you're interested, if you have the equipment, um then contact a town hall and you can fill out the proper paperwork. Curbside pickup of Christmas trees uh end it will end on January fifteenth, so if your tree isn't down, get it down, get out. We'll take care of it. Um, town hall will be closed Monday, January eighteenth uh in observance of Martin Luther King, King Day. And trash bills are due by January eighteenth. So hopefully everybody can get those in.
Hey, Mike, quick question. On the parking ban, the winter parking ban, is that during the snow emergency or all the time?
All the time.
All the time.
Um, there is a waiver that the police department can uh can give if someone has a hardship and can't park, then they can call the police department and work something out with the with the police department.
Thank you.
We incorporated a um, a digital blue light on our on our website. Uh, and we usually put out a a call, a a code red robocall to the community when a storm is coming. So for those uh, you know, that have uh the waiver, um they're able to move off the street and clear the roads for the DPW. Um, and we offer the school parking lot and the town hall parking lot uh during that snowstorm.
I just sort of noticed a chat uh come up about the trash bill. The trash bills are due on January eighteenth. Um, so. Okay, I want to let's see, new business. Uh, we have some minutes to approve. Okay, hey, Josh.
That's because I'm muted. Um, uh, can I make a quick opening comment before we?
Yeah, please, go ahead. Yeah, sorry.
Um, we had um a request from a a resident to um look into adding a an ordinance for clearing your sidewalks. Uh, I personally haven't looked into seeing if there's anything on the books yet, but um just in the meantime, um, please try to clear your sidewalks, especially if you're on one of the main roads. Um, and then the other other thing is the Christmas trees, if you can't bear to take yours down uh before the fifteenth, those can still be deposited at the compost. Oh, no, compost is closed for the season, right?
Uh, Nahat, uh, if if it's afterwards, we'll, we try to get most of them before the before the fifteenth, but, you know, if we see one on the side of the road, we'll come and get it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, and and please, you know, obviously, uh, um, you know, make sure it's it's bare, no bags, uh, no, no leftover lights or ornaments, um, uh wreaths and garland does not, um, that you have to get rid of on your own. Uh, we can't put that in the compost pile.
Go ahead, Gene.
Yeah, uh, Josh, thanks for mentioning the um sidewalks. Uh, I it was, I I sent you that email because I had a couple of people email me suggesting that we do something particularly in high incident areas like the curve at the at the um cemetery. You know, apparently people were walking out in the street on that curve, and that's a that's a tough spot, as we all know. But I think, what do we have to clear sidewalks?
Yeah, uh, let me ask what they, Tony, before you jump in, I want to ask Dan, um, it does this require a a bylaw? Isn't it, isn't it already a requirement that homeowners have to clear in front of their homes?
I'm talking, I'm talking about public properties. I'm talking about about that all in front of the cemetery, the police station, which is normally plowed, but there's a couple of high, high incident areas that I think that we should take a look at.
So we have, so we have a snow removal plan uh that Zach employs and he's on the, and he's actually online with us, uh, uh, Gene, so I'll let him get into the, you know, the details on it, but um, you know, generally speaking, we uh we have priority sidewalk areas that we attack uh first. Uh, the school, the Jesmond, you know, those areas. Um, and then and then we get to some of the other, the other public spaces. But Zach, do you want to expand on sidewalk removal?
Yeah, I I mean, excuse me, all all public sidewalks should be cleared after a storm by the town. Um, so if we had missed in front of the cemetery, I apologize, but that should be um on the list of public sidewalks that that should be cleared, that and certainly in front of the police station as well.
Okay, thanks.
Is um, you know, is the edge of parks like Marjoram Park, is that considered a public sidewalk? Because that was not plowed.
Yes, 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 yeah.
Everybody was in the street along there for the whole snow.
Yeah, yeah, we're we're working on it right now to be better, more efficient at um sidewalk removal. Um, but certainly um Marjoram Park would is is on that list, all parks.
Yeah, thank you, Zach. So Dan, is it a requirement that homeowners come out in front of the?
You know, I I think at this town by town thing, there was a what they call a natural accumulation defense, which is to say if you fell, if someone fell on someone's sidewalk, but it was a natural accumulation of snow, there was a a legal defense to that, but I believe that's been overruled by the Supreme Court of Massachusetts within the past few years. So that's something I have to look into, but my understanding is a city by city thing that would require some form of a, in our case, a bylaw.
Okay, right. We'll look into that then.
Yep.
All right. Okay, um, ongoing business. Uh, we have a discussion about uh Tree City USA application. I know, Tony, um,
We have to back to the new business, though.
Oh, oh, that's right. We didn't approve the minutes, right?
Yeah, right. So um, I'll make a motion. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from December seventeenth, twenty twenty.
I'll second that.
Motion is amended, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, seeing none, all in favor?
Josh, enter mine.
Gene, can't the eye?
Mark, come on the night. Okay, now we get on to Tree City USA. Um, so we have an application to join Tree City up um USA. Tony, you uh can talk about that. I know Vi and Nancy, uh, you're instrumental on this and you're on, so um, why don't you walk us, walk us through it?
Okay, so it's really amazing. I haven't seen so many faces in a long time and smiles. It's pretty good. We need to smile, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I want to express my thanks to Tony for inviting me to give some background about the town's December twenty ninth application to become a Tree City USA. And I've asked Nancy Cantelmo to help me tonight with this. It's going to be very short. You've both written short scripts, so don't worry. Um, so first of all, what is Tree City USA program? Since nineteen seventy six, Tree City USA has been a nationwide movement that provides the framework necessary for communities to manage and expand their public trees. Tree City USA is an Arbor Day Foundation program in cooperation with the USDA Forest Service, the Urban and Community Forestry Program of the US Forest Service, and the National Association of Foresters. In partnership with the National Arbor Day Foundation, the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR, administers the program. Kind of interesting, the state administers the program. DCR is responsible for reviewing Tree City USA applications from Massachusetts communities to ensure that the information is current, accurate, and complete. The DCR then recommends applicants for the designation to the National Arbor Day Foundation, and that's what we've done. The town has now sent in the application. Interestingly, fifty-six percent of Massachusetts lives in a Tree City UA community, and Nahat is surrounded by them. The following cities belong to Tree City, are Tree City USA, Lynn, Swampscott, Marblehead, Revere, Hibbity, Danvers, Salem, Boston are the nearest ones. So then, why become a Tree City USA? And in the case of Nahat, the creation of a permanent framework for our DPW to use for managing the town's public shade trees on town property by the establishment of a tree task force composed of volunteer residents will be a real asset. This tree task force will not be a town committee, but rather a group of volunteers named by our superintendent of public works, Zach Taylor. These volunteers will serve him by inventorying public shade trees and creating annual written recommendations for their management. The Tree City USA program offers a template which requires the town people adopt an ordinance to that effect. In Nahat, this will be in the form of a bylaw to be voted upon at the next town meeting. This bylaw has six paragraphs. Our superintendent of public works, Zach Taylor, selected topics and text which he felt would be most appropriate from ordinance from ordinance of other towns in Massachusetts. Paragraph one, definition of public shade trees. Paragraph two, the purpose of the Nahat tree bylaw. Paragraph three, creation of a Nahat tree task force. And paragraphs, paragraphs four, five, and six are three paragraphs defining policy concerning management of public shade trees with respect to tree topping, spacing, and removal of stumps. Other advantages of becoming a Tree City USA. Um, it builds co- cooperation between public and private sectors to effectively manage urban forests. It touches the lives of people within the community who benefit from cleaner air, shadier streets, and aesthetic beauty that healthy, well-managed urban forests provide. One hundred mature trees do the work of one thousand air conditioners. One hundred mature trees do the work of one thousand air conditioners. And one hundred mature trees capture two hundred thousand gallons of rainwater per year, reducing flooding and runoff. Being a Tree City USA builds cooperation between public and private sectors to effectively manage urban forests. Being a Tree City USA serves as a blueprint for planting and maintaining a community's trees. It shows that ours is a community that cares about its environment. Being a Tree City USA can help provide access to allocations of grant money, which is very important. And being a Tree City USA is free of charge. Now I invite Nancy Cantelmo, who has worked with me and Zach Taylor in putting together the application to have Nahat become a Tree City USA. And she's going to give a quick review of the requirements um that were in the uh application that was submitted. So Nancy, it's yours.
So there are four requirements, which they call standards to um that we have to fulfill to become a Tree City USA. The first standard is that we establish the Advisory Tree Board that um Vi just mentioned. Um, we choose to call it a tree task force. And as she said, it would be five citizens appointed by um the superintendent of the Nahat um Department of Public Works. And the purpose of the tree task force is to assist the DPW in planting and care of trees. The second standard is to have a public tree care ordinance, which Vi also alluded to, which would delineate the policy for the town's tree care program. So in Massachusetts, there's this um law um called Chapter eighty-seven, which is the framework for all the trees and what has to be done in the state for public trees. Um, so in our, in Nahat, our town council has recommended that we don't call it an ordinance, but we call it a bylaw. And the purpose of this would be to refine what Chapter eighty-seven says on the statewide level specifically for our town. Um, and this um tree ordinance, this um bylaw that we're going to be bringing up later um next year um also establishes this task force that we mentioned um in standard one. The third standard would be to have, that we document that Nahat spends two dollars per capita um on trees. Um, so we don't have any worry about this because there's no new monies needed um for us to come up with because the Nahat DPW already spends about thirteen thousand dollars per year on public shade trees. So we have fulfilled that requirement. The last part is um standard four is an Arbor Day observance and a proclamation. So Arbor Day is traditionally the last Friday in April. Um, the garden club for many, many years has observed Arbor Day with a program recognizing and planting trees and shrubs. Um, but because of COVID nineteen, um, a formal gathering was not permitted in twenty twenty. So we asked people all over town to describe trees that were special to them or to document heritage trees, um, which we estimated their age of. And we created a PowerPoint presentation documenting these trees, and this was shared with many citizens. And we're still considering this an ongoing process and project. Um, and about the Arbor Day proclamation, um, it was read by the town manager at um a Board of Selectmen meeting on January ninth, twenty twenty. So the application was submitted by the town administration on December thirtieth, twenty twenty, documenting that we've fulfilled the standards. However, because COVID nineteen prevented the bylaw from being considered at the twenty twenty town meeting, Tony Barletta submitted our application to Tree City with the understanding that the bylaw would be presented in twenty twenty-one, and our designation of a Tree City is dependent on approval at that town meeting. So to just uh sum up, a lot, number of Nahat residents have been working on this application for a few years. And recently, we have been working with the town administration, the town council, FinCom, and um and Zach Taylor, our superintendent of the DPW. We are happy to provide a copy of the proposed bylaw, the twenty twenty Arbor Arbor Day presentation, and any Tree City information that anyone would like who's interested, and they could um contact Vi at vi paddock gmail at gmail dot com. So we invite all Nahat residents who are interested to join us in our efforts to promote the planting and care of these precious trees uh we have in our town. Um, and we look forward to hopefully getting good news from Tree City USA.
That's it. That that thirteen thousand dollars that we already spend, is that for repair, replacement, removal? Is there a a replacement for a removal? Is any of those questions can be answered?
Zach can answer those.
Can you hear me, Gene?
Yeah.
Um, most of it's removal. And uh, you know, a lot of it's maintenance on some of our older trees that require pruning and that type of thing. Um, but a lot of that money was spent on removal of um diseased trees and that type of thing. So in my short time here, you've lost um quite a few trees and um haven't planted enough. So this will hopefully.
And just, and looking at it as something where if we remove something, we should replace it.
So we believe this is really important part of this um this being a Tree City and and um having a tree task force. So we have already started doing surveys of the public trees in Nahat as a way of helping um the DPW understand what trees we have, what trees are diseased, and uh what trees need to be replaced. And we hope through various means, um like the grants Vi talked about, but also Arbor Day itself, we can get lots of trees and make a plan to replace those trees, those public trees um around town.
Now, I wanted to add that one of the things Zach mentioned when we were just discussing all of this, that he would, it would be so helpful to him to have a list of trees um on pub, these are all public tree, shade trees now, it's nothing to do with private trees ranked, which are the most dangerous and the worst places like in parks. So we've um, we have a volunteer that has already done a complete mapping and evaluation of the trees at the library playground. And um, you know, now Zach knows that, he has that. And this person also did the ones over at Canoe Beach, and we want to do the ones in all the other public trees. And then he can say, okay, I can make a plan, I can make a budget instead of just, you know, dealing with this this tree that's dangerous and that trees, because these trees are really dangerous. We're having a an absolute crisis of falling apart trees in Nahat. They're aging out, they're rotten. It's it's really very severe and there are parts of town now that have no trees, and we need to do something about it. So hopefully, maybe this will work.
Thank you, Vi, and thank you, Nancy. This is very exciting. And thank you, Tony and Zach, for making this a priority. It hasn't been for a number of years. I know that back when I was an administrator, trees were a priority. And I'm glad to see that they're becoming one again. In fact, I think back in the early 2000s, we started our own tree farm down by the community garden. I think that's since been pretty much overgrown. But and those trees are probably not harvestable anymore. But that's something we could think about. I'm very interested in the tree inventory that you're talking about. We had begun one way back when. I believe, I think there's some farms somewhere in the town hall that you could probably use to do this tree inventory.
And we like to GPS them. We want to GPS them.
You could GPS them. They could be on the town website, they could be part of an educational program for the schools and a resource for our residents. We could look at historical trees and unique trees and all of those types of things. There are some very interesting trees in the town that should be documented. So I'm all for this. I think it's a great idea. It's long overdue and I thank you and Tony and Zach for making it a priority again. So whatever I can do to help out, I'll be one of the people on the task force who will take the farms around and start doing the inventory. Be glad to do that on a Sunday. I mean, it's a great activity for anyone to do, to get outside, to start, you know, seeing, learning more about these things. It's a great thing for families to do with their kids, to go out and start doing inventories of the trees and get a description of them and all of that stuff. So I think it's a great, great thing to do.
Thank you, Mark.
Even in our public spaces too, you know, around like the Johnson School, around our public buildings, they provide, it's an energy saver, you know, by providing that shade. It's a win-win all around. So I really thank Vi and Nancy for taking the lead on it and Zach as well. So I echo your comments there, Mark.
Jean, Josh, any comments on this?
I'm good, thank you.
Josh, you're muted again.
Yeah, just thank you. I have a heater on behind me and I, which I don't know if it's coming through. So I'm keeping myself muted when I'm speaking.
We had, we had this on the agenda for the last town meeting. It got bumped because of our narrowing down of the warrant, but it'll be on. Yep, in the town meeting.
Great.
Oh, and I also wanted to thank Dan Scrip because he really helped us craft this text. And we can make the text, it's quite short and simple, of this little bylaw available. I've sent it all into the town, so the town has it also.
Yeah, maybe when we do this inventory, I mean, we could have, let's talk about that. I mean, I'd be interested to see how you set that up and how you involve neighborhoods. You could do it on a neighborhood level and get a sort of neighborhood leader in each neighborhood to use the farms and go out and start inventorying these trees. And it could be, it could be a fun activity.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, next on the agenda, it's the East Point, okay? We have a few things here. As I said at the last meeting, we were hoping to get the financial impact review that the town contracted for in place, and we have received that finally. It's been several months. I've been able to go through it. For those of you, just to bring you up to speed, the Board of Selectmen last year prepared their own, our own financial impact review on the cost of the Northeastern facility, the cost to the town, the impact to the town if Northeastern were allowed to build the 55,000 square foot facility. And I believe in that in that report that we had, we, I think the amount was between 17 million and I think, was it 24 million over a 40-year period? And the finance committee asked the town if we would contract with an independent consultant who is experienced in doing these types of financial reviews and report back. So the town did contract a consultant, RKG Associates. They're an estate planning and economic development consulting firm. They're very experienced in this type of work. I encourage anyone who wants to see the types of work they do to go on their website, take a look at the people who work there, their backgrounds, and some of the types of work they've done, but it's RKG Associates. They spent several months reviewing a lot of the town data, the Board of Selectmen's report, meeting with town officials, police, fire, DPW, looking at infrastructure and capital costs that may be associated to such a development. And let me just say, we're going to make this report available to the town via our website. But the report concludes that the proposed Northeastern facility will result in a total additional cost to the town. Oh, excuse me. So the Board of Selectmen's report was between 16.9 million and 21.7 million over a 40-year period. RKG's report estimated potential operating costs associated with the Northeastern expansion by utilizing a per capita average cost approach. Their methodology calculated the average cost of providing services across many of the town's various departments, as laid out in the town's budget, and divided the town's population, resulting in an average cost of $2,835 per person. This per capita cost was then multiplied by a reported number of new employees at the Northeastern facility, 114, as they say in the ENF application. That would result in an annual cost of about $323,000 per year, which was then added over a 40-year period, which would total about $13 million over a 40-year period. The same methodology was also used to calculate the impacts using the higher employment estimates reported in Northeastern's initial ENF filing, which was 147, not 114. And that resulted, using the same methodology, to about $17.2 million. So what RKG did then is, that's without any inflation over the 40-year period. They applied a 2.5% inflation rate over this 40-year period. And the total increased cost went from 22,000, 22.4 million to 28.9 million. So, you know, in summary, what this tells me is what I've, what we've always felt along the way. And I think it confirms the report that the Board of Selectmen had published earlier in the year. It's pretty close. And it's alarming. This, if this development goes forward, it's going to cost the town a substantial amount of money. As we recall, Northeastern proposed in early negotiations, something like $6 million over a 40-year period. We're talking anywhere from 13.3 million to 17.2 million over 40 years without inflation and with inflation, between 22 million and 28 million. So this is, this is pretty alarming. I hope the town, I hope that anybody who's interested in this will take the opportunity to read it, go through it. It's very detailed. I just read some of the highlights in it. You can look at their methodology, you can take a look at the firm and their work. So Josh or Jean, you might want to comment on this?
Yeah, just a quick comment. As I went through that letter, the response, a couple of times they alluded to the fact that we're giving up somewhere in the vicinity of $250,000 a year in tax money. And I'm wondering, forgetting the future, why couldn't we approach the pilot program, the payment in lieu of taxes now in a system that amount of money? There's probably a good reason we don't do it, but that's a lot of money to have sitting there.
Yeah, this report, Jean, that the numbers I just read off are for the additional employees that they're planning, okay? It doesn't account for the 100 and so employees they have there already.
No.
They're not paying taxes on.
I agree with what you're saying, but this alludes to current day, current facility, current staff. And I'm just looking at it saying, you know, in Boston, they run this program with the institutions.
They do have a pilot program in Boston, whether or not Northeastern lives up to their obligation. Regarding that pilot is, I'm not quite sure. But Tony, you might want to.
Yeah, I think, you know, from what we understand, you know, the city of Boston and many other cities or larger communities, they do have pilot agreements or requirements in place. But there is no, they are not obligated to pay those pilot payments. So I don't think that, you know, Boston's, the formula that Boston has in place, I think the last time we discussed this, we, you know, it seemed like they don't collect nearly the amount that the formula requires because there really is no legal requirement for these institutions to pay those payments. They are payments in lieu of taxes. So, you know, while we are, while I agree, I agree with everything Selectmen has mentioned. Unfortunately, there's no real, there's really no legal requirement that you could impose upon Northeastern to pay a pilot payment. Now, there is, you can negotiate and agree with them, but usually that happens when you have leverage, when they want something or when they want to do some type of development in town. You know, so, you know, you could, you could go to Northeastern and say, we've developed a pilot payment formula and we've decided that you should pay X amount in lieu of taxes. But at the end of the day, Dan Scrip, you can jump in, please. But I don't believe there's any legal obligation for them to actually pay that.
Yeah, Tony, I've not looked into the issue, but I think that's about right, yeah.
I'm just, you know what, I'm looking at that last sentence in one of those last paragraphs. And it says, it's a, we have, we face a foregoing tax revenue, foregoing tax revenue of 220,000 to 285 annually. And that's eight to 11 million dollars over 40 years. So obviously what they're doing is they're tacking that on to the cost that you're talking about, Mark, which is increasing every time we talk.
Yeah, I mean, I think what that number they're referring to, you're referring to, Jean, is that that 200 and some odd thousand per year is what they currently have, should be paying based on the services from the employees they have on staff today. This report only looks at the additional employees, the 114 or 147 employees that they would bring on with a new development. And again, I just want to emphasize that we are only looking at general fund expenditures. RKG only looked at general fund expenditures. They only looked at public safety, like DPW debt service, health, you know, those types of services. We didn't even include educational because we're figuring, well, the new employees aren't going to be contributing, they're not going to be have, probably won't be living in town, won't be have kids in school. So we didn't even, RKG didn't even include education in the report.
I saw that.
As a cost. So, and they didn't include any capital. They just felt that it was too much of an unknown in terms of, you know, repairing roads and those types of things. This is just straight services.
It gave a good outline of what the capital expenditures could be.
Could be, right. And it would bring this number a lot higher.
Josh, I just wanted to, you mentioned something that's really important and I wanted to make sure it didn't get missed. But this RKG assessment is only on the additional 114 employees or people, I'll say, that Northeastern says. So I think they have about 114 there already. So though, whatever their current population is, which I think is around 14, is not even included in this assessment as I read it.
That's correct.
Everything they're looking at or we're looking at is doubled from what it is now.
Right, that's right, Jean.
So obviously, it was really important to get this assessment done. Virtually impossible to have a fact-based negotiation with Northeastern without a realistic assessment of what the cost to the town is. So glad this, I'm glad this is done.
Yeah, Tony, we should get this up on the website so that the public can take a look at it. I know we're going to be meeting at some point with the finance committee to discuss it. The finance committee has a copy, correct? I don't want to be jumping the gun on this, but it's a report that they requested. So I look forward to having a conversation with them regarding this. I do notice there was a chat in here, I think Ken mentioned, asked, Ken Conlanjo asked if the town ever pursued a pilot program. I can tell you that when I was town administrator, we did. And the best we could get is a partial scholarship for Nahant students. And that was about it.
There's also, Michelle Copato posted a link in the chat to a report on the pilot payments to the city of Boston for 2020. Pretty interesting to look at that.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? I know we have a, Tony, we have a Conservation Commission hearing coming up on end of the month regarding Northeastern?
Yes, so that will be available by Zoom and it'll get posted on the community calendar. And we may also be able to, we're going to try to broadcast that through the cable TV as well. Obviously, those tuning in from home, we don't capture those and you can't really participate from home. Although, you know, I don't want to imply that there is citizen participation. I'm not sure if there is or not at this, this initial step of the Conservation Commission, but it will be aired publicly through Zoom and likely on the local.
Tony, I know you had some Conservation Commission appointments. Are you working on them, correct, prior to this meeting?
Yeah, so we.
It would be good to have a full board.
Yes, yeah, we have. We announced that. We didn't receive a ton of interest, to be honest. But we did get a couple, a couple resumes for the open seat. So we'll make sure that gets done to make sure that we have a full board and that it's done prior to so that they can, you know, participate in this process.
That'd be great, Tony. I think that's important. I know your appointments, but having a full board with something like this would be very helpful.
Yeah, I just wanted, in case I ever miss that, it is a town administrator appointment. So no vote required from the Board of Selectmen or participation from the moderator. I'd like to encourage people to join by Zoom. I'd like to encourage people to join by Zoom to the extent possible. You get a little more sense of the action, obviously not as much as being there in person, but I think more so than watching on TV. So I'd encourage people that are interested in the topic.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I'm done.
I was just gonna say, I also had two ZBA appointments that I'll be making as well in the coming week that, you know, we conducted some interviews quite some time ago and and it honestly fell through the cracks with everything else going on, but we've communicated it again recently with those two, with the two appointees and we'll be reaching out to them with the letter of appointment in the next week. I know that the ZBA was running short on associate members, so I'm happy to fill that board up as well.
Right.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, anything else on these points? Okay, we're on to Town Administrator's Report.
So before I get into Lowlands Stormwater, another thing I just wanted to mention was we are, we are approaching budget season. So we are, I'm actively meeting with, well, I guess, number one, our new accountant, Allison, started earlier this week, and she's already sat through a half dozen budget meetings with department heads. And we're actively working on our, on the upcoming budget. We'll be meeting with the FinCom next week to initiate the, you know, the conversation about upcoming steps. I wanted to reach out to Lynn Spencer about CPC application information. It's usually this time of year. Unfortunately, I didn't have an opportunity to connect with her prior to this meeting, but I'm sure that'll get posted on our website as well. Other, by, the bylaw states that citizen petitions, committee requests have to be into the Board of Selectmen by the end of the month for warrant articles. And we, yeah, so that's a quick little update on budget. Lowlands Stormwater, this is, you know, especially after the recent storm, we were communicated by a few members of the neighborhood down in the Castle, Fox Hill and Ward Road area with a request to add this to the agenda. I have, I have, you know, a decent amount of information to go through. We have Zach Taylor is on, is on the call as well as Dennis Ball, who was, you know, you know, actually walking through the floodwaters at that time. Zach, myself, I mean, I was too, but not in the, not as town administrator. So we have, you know, the right people on the call and I have some information, but I wanted to. I know that we have some residents on the call as well, so I don't know, do you, would you prefer, Mr. Chairman, me to go through some of the, it's a little lengthy, I don't know if you'd want to go to the residents first?
Well, I mean, I think what the residents were looking for, what we promised them was that we'd have a meeting with them about preliminary plans and what we were working on, both in long term and short term. I know that you and Zach have been doing a lot of that work. So I think it would be best if you went through that and then we can open it up to a discussion with the people on board.
Okay, let me see if I can share my screen here.
We can see that.
Okay, good. So is this slideshow, are you seeing the full slideshow now?
You're not in slideshow mode.
Okay, hold on a second. How about now?
Okay, here's the first slide.
So annual town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so in 2018, Article Number 32, at that town meeting authorized $175,000 to fund drainage improvements to the Ward Road and Bear Pond areas, specifically resolving the gravity outfall at Bear Pond, assessing fixing the pipes that drain Ward, Fox Hill, Castle Road, dredging the drainage ditch and providing a permanent portable pump to the Ward Road area. This was in April of 2018. When I came on in August of 2018, none of this $175,000 had been spent yet. We initially, we began by, we began by exploring the viability of the 18-inch outfall pipe that goes from Castle, you know, basically the intersection of Fox Hill and Castle Road out through an easement in between two homes out to Doug. We spent, I want to say, we begun, so I started in August, in September was when we started it. We began by, you know, camera, we sent a camera down, cleaning and sent a camera down the pipe, hit a dead end, then we hired a company to come out and actually dig in the easement on the land side of the revetment and discovered that the pipe did not make it through the old revetment. It's probably, it's likely that that has been that way for, at a minimum, 15 years or longer, maybe longer, so. We, the next step was to take a look at the stormwater system, drain system in this area. And we surveyed rim heights and depths and size of pipes and direction that they should be heading in. Did you see my mouse on this screen when I?
Yes.
You can see my mouse right now?
Regular, yeah, it's up there.
Yeah. So the, you know, the catch base or the manhole where the, some stormwater pipes head is right about here and the 18-inch pipe goes out this way. We have storm drains that intend to pitch towards that out, towards that manhole. We have, and then we have storm drains on Fox Hill that pitch this way as well and almost into this backyard here. There's then an 18-inch brick. I don't know if I would even call it a pipe, but a 18-inch pipe that goes from this backyard to this Castle Road area. It's almost flat. It's not an incredible amount of pitch. There's then a 30-inch pipe that goes from this back area through this yard here and to the ditch system that begins on Ward Road in this corner of the parking lot entrance, which then heads down Ward Road through the Heritage Trail and over towards eventually getting to the golf course in Bear Pond. When we discussed, when we did this evaluation of the stormwater system and the outfall pipe, it was at this time, it was about November, heading into the winter of 2018, going into 2019. And we determined pretty quickly that we didn't have the funds at that time, nor did it seem like the most valuable next step to further pursue making that 18-inch pipe outfall operational. And we used some of that funds plus FEMA funds to purchase two 8-inch diesel force pumps that we would have here in town to help with the process of de-watering after a flood event. Here they are. These pumps have the capacity of 4,500 gallons per minute. We have, Zach, how much? Discharge and suction length of hose do we have for these? Zach, are you still there?
Maybe muted.
Okay, well, we purchased a, oh, there you are.
To fill some dead space, that's, that works out to 540,000 gallons an hour.
Right, so.
Between the two pumps.
So these, these pumps are
How much was that, Zach? I mean, Josh? Josh?
Over half a million gallons an hour.
So to put that, to put that in perspective, think about, think about it this way. One acre foot of water, that is, one acre with one foot of water on it is approximately 325,000 gallons. So it's like one acre with two feet of water on it. Dispense that every hour.
So, you know, these two pumps are are critical and the most valuable and gonna make the most significant impact to improving our de-watering timeframe. So that's what we did, you know, in November, like I said, we, you know, we were approaching the winter. We did not want to go through another winter with a potential storm and not have these at our, you know, with, ready to deploy, so these, this is the next step we took. We got through that winter and with fairly little surge or flooding. So we, in the spring of that next year, we focused on Bear Pond. You know, the ditch system obviously needs repairing, needs dredging, that's a long-term or mid to long-term goal of ours. But we did take a look at the other end of Bear Pond and Dennis, I know you're on the board, I know you're on the call as well. And I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about what we experienced in 2018. But the, you know, Bear Pond, these pictures here, this is a before picture, this is after, before, after, before, after. The force main, I mean, I'm sorry, the gravity outfall pipe was completely clogged. And the pumps there were not really operating at their, at their highest capacity. We also, of course, in 2018, didn't have those two 8-inch pumps in hand. I can't find Dennis on my screen, I'm trying to do multiple things, oh, here we are. Dennis?
Yes? Can you hear me?
Talking a little bit about 2018 and the issues experienced in the Bear Pond area and why it was important for us to take this next step to help with the stormwater drainage system.
I think the largest challenge that we had on that, on that large storm was that we had a, I think it was a 10-inch, vintage 1972 Navy pump, and I use Navy pump in quotations, big diesel pump that was a primary de-watering pump along with the gravity system that's in place for Bear Pond. An aged, aged piece of equipment, however, the problem we had was level of tides. The pumps were actually activated during the storms, however, they were washed out several times. So mechanically and physically, we had, we were in a negative position to de-water during the storm event. You know, and that's, and that's with, with Bear Pond being drained down to its lowest levels prior to the storms.
So are utilizing additional FEMA funds, not the 175,000 that was appropriated back in 2018, but using FEMA funds, we were able to get in here and improve the efficiency of Bear Pond, which is critical to our storm drain system, not just in the Lowlands, but most of the town. We simultaneously in 2019, with the help of a number of folks in town, joining the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Committee and Task Force, we were able to apply for an action grant on MVP that we are, we're still in the process of, of, we're waiting to hear back from MAPC for construction dollars. But the goal of this project was to improve the resiliency of the Short Beach Dune. These are preliminary drawings of opportunities that we can take that will help the resiliency by filling in the access points in three or four different locations. So you can see here, this is the location next to the life-saving station. This here is across from the women's softball field and Lowlands parking lot. And this here is down by Spring Road. And these are two different options. We talked about a potential stairway, elevated walkway over the dune versus a flat boardwalk type material that's CZM compliant. So as an update to this, we, in the last year, we've now have a design that still needs to go through some permitting, but we're also in the process of applying for construction dollars from MAPC. Most recently, since our last conversation at the Board of Selectmen meeting, as I mentioned before, looking at the stormwater system in the area of the Lowlands, we've engineered a, an alternative drainage basin that we could utilize in a flood, in a flood situation by taking those 8-inch pumps and being able to put the suction hose into a basin that would help us de-water the area in a quick manner while also not having to block traffic on Nahat Road or Castle Road for that matter. So as you can see in this design, this is a preliminary design that we still need to go to permitting and there may be some changes in this design. But as you can see here, this area here that I'm circling with my mouse is the green space where the old playground used to be in the parking lot, right adjacent to the women's softball field. What this, this concept here would be a rip-wrapped basin and Zach, jump in here, please, whenever you, whenever you're ready. That, and here are two shoulders along the Nahat Road, which is elevated typically from the floodwaters that are, that is down in the, in the parking lot area. And an underground, underground piping that would have quick connect on either side, similar to what you see here on the right side. So we could essentially pull our pumps up into these shoulders, drop suction hose into this basin, take the discharge hose, quick connect it here on this side of Nahat Road, and then quick connect on the other side of Nahat Road to discharge out to Short Beach in an, in an emergency situation.
Zach? Tony, let me just jump in here. So I did some field trips with you and Zach down here, and it was determined that that location is the lowest elevation from the area. So if you view Castle, Fox Hill Road, Lowlands as a bathtub, this is where the drain would be.
It's, it is, it's, this next, let me go to this next slide here to try to help. This is, this is not, um, an engineered drawing at all. This is me trying to help explain, uh, the process that, uh, we would go through in a flood-like situation. These pictures on the top right corner are from 2018. Um, when we have a flood situation like this, uh, we can't, you know, ideally, uh, having a pump in, you know, the, one of the lower spots is probably Castle Way, Ward Road, as you get to the dead end towards the pump station. There's also a very low spot in that, uh, backyard off of Fox Hill Road. Um, but when the water is as high as it was in 2018, like this red line here, you can't get your equipment in there. So what this would allow us to do would be to bring our pumps to this location here and start dewatering. As the water recedes, um, we can then move those pumps into the parking lot and start pulling water from this area where that thirty-inch main, uh, drains to. Not only there, but as, as a, as a significant amount of water that comes through this stormwater system drains through that thirty-inch towards the Lowlands, uh, the Ward Road ditch area, which has already been, uh, restored. And then as we dewater there, we can even move our pumps into a further, further area down. And again, both, all three of these locations, we can take our discharge hose, run to those quick-connect pipes that would be under the hot road and avoid having to shut down traffic. Um, so you're not, every storm isn't going to require the use of this new engineered, uh, basin, but the most critical may. So that's why every storm is different. You don't know how much flooding you're going to get. Uh, the beauty of the mobile pumps is that we're able to, um, that we're able to, to deploy them where they're most needed, uh, when they're needed. Um, and, and what we're doing here is trying to come up with a phased approach. Zach, do you want to, do you have anything to add in there? Hold on, let me see. Can't, I don't know how to unmute you. Oh, here we go. Try that, Zach.
You hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's important also to note that we may be also working our way out, starting inside and working out depending on the severity of the storm. Um, you know, if we're being proactive, we're inside, trying to keep it as low as we can. But again, getting overwhelmed may cause us to move out, um, instead of, like you said, always moving in. Um, and it's gonna depend on the storm and the flooding and, um, you know, determine our locate, locations, but I think this is a good diagram to show the different types of flooding that can occur down there.
That's a good point, Zach. I, I assume that normally you'd start at the, the innermost point and not move outward. You know, certainly you don't want to wait until it's flooded way up by the hot road before you start pumping, so.
Right, right.
I'm glad you brought that up. Makes a lot of sense.
So, you know, we have, I, you know, I don't want to, I, I guess, uh, some of the point I'm making here is that, you know, since, um, September of 2018, we have done, uh, a quite, quite a lot, um, regarding this issue. Uh, we still have more, more to do. Uh, we do intend to include a, um, borrowing article in this year's town meeting to help, um, with the construction of this project and to help, and potentially to fund some, um, uh, uh, dredging or ditch work to help improve the flow of this water towards, um, Bear Pond. Uh, in the meantime, we're still pursuing the MAPC grant for construction dollars to help with, uh, the resiliency of Short Beach Dune. And I would like to also, um, I think the next step there too, on the resiliency side is we have, you know, our biggest issue in this area is water coming from Castle Road. Uh, there's one spot in particular, um, where the water comes in, uh, but it's right in between two homes. So doing some type of, um, you know, getting some professionals in here and doing some type of engineering to see what type of, you know, how we could potentially, uh, improve some resiliency in that area without negatively impacting the foundations of the adjac, of the adjacent properties. The abutting properties would be, uh, something I'd like to do as well. But, um, any questions or, um, comments from the board?
Um, so, uh, that, this is your last slide, Tony?
Um, I, I, the last, my very last slide is just that today, you know, along with dredging, um, actually a few years, a few years in the making now, has been, um, getting mosquito control out here to do their annual maintenance on, on, um, on dredging. And, uh, unfortunately, the past few years, they haven't come out. Um, so they actually started work today along this, this is the, uh, eighth hole, uh, in, at Kelly Greens. Um, this ditch system here hasn't been cleaned out in, you know, many, many years and is a key, uh, drainage point for the White Way Emerald Road area. Uh, so we're, we're, that started today, that project started today. And, um, we have a commitment from them to be here. Um, it's on, we, we work, we walked the entire ditch system with them a couple of years ago and, um, tried to work out a, like a five-year rotating annual maintenance plan. So hopefully this is year one, um, and they'll be back next year continuing the process.
Hey, Tony, Shannon Bianchi just flashed a, a chat on there and I couldn't, it wasn't on there long enough to read it. Maybe we could ask him what he was looking to suggest.
May we, maybe do that, um, after we finish in, in the citizens' participation section?
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, I just wanted to, um, ask Tony, um, I want to mention the eighteen-inch pipe that, um, gets cut off at the revetment. Um, I, there may be a perception that if we simply open that up, um, all the problems go away. Um, my, um, memory, uh, is that, uh, when discussing the elevations with you and Zach a few months back, that the exit from that manhole cover on Castle Road was something like nine feet below the street surface, maybe it was six feet, but, um, do you remember that number offhand?
Uh, seven feet, the inverted of that eighteen-inch pipe, Josh, is seven feet below Castle Road.
Okay, so I just, so I just want people to understand that, that, that gravity line won't work until the ocean level is seven feet, is lower than seven feet below, seven feet under the road. In other words, even if we opened up that pipe, we would have to run that pipe out probably at least a hundred yards out of Doggy Beach and have a very low tide for it to really work as a gravity drain. Um, so, um, I guess it's better than nothing, but it wouldn't help much in a flooding event, especially while the storm, storm surge is still active. So, um, and then the other, uh, comment was the gravity drain from, uh, Bear Pond, which, uh, my understanding has been clogged for several years. Uh, so while that's clogged, the only drainage is the electric pumps, right? And those, uh, I know Zach, I think you've told me the capacity of those in the past, but I forget the number, but it's, I believe, less than those portable pumps.
Certainly.
Yeah. Um, and though, and that, that check valve or flapper valve, as it's called, uh, also tends to get clogged in, in storm events by rocks and sand getting flushed into it. So not really reliable in a storm event, leaving us just with the pumps as, as a way to dewater. So I just wanted to make those couple of points.
Those are good points, Josh. Um, Tony, could you put that, um, that aerial view of the circles of flooded areas, the three stars you had, could you put that back up for a minute?
Sure.
I want to make a comment on that.
While, while you're digging for that, Tony, um, in addition to that, on that eighteen-inch pipe, uh, because it's been non-functional for a number of years, my understanding is that would have to be re-permitted, uh, which is a, uh, expensive process. So that combination is expensive process for not very effective gravity drain from that point.
There's, yeah, I, 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 I don't want to, I don't want it to sound like we don't believe in the, that the eighteen-inch outfall pipe to Doggy Beach doesn't have value. There is value to it, to.
Not much.
To getting it.
Not much.
Not much in, you know, dependent on the situation. And, and it's just that when you are, when we're trying to make, you know, the biggest impact, um, possible as soon as possible, you know, I think we're, I think we're finding that. I think we're following that method. But I do think that, you know, once you get, um, this basin constructed, once you have the ditch system working in the right way, um, and then potentially improving on those two resiliency pieces of Short Beach and, and hopefully maybe something on Castle Road, those are, I would say, the most valuable to, um, preventing or, uh, helping with recovery. The eighteen-inch pipe comes ver, comes very next. Um, it's not, it's not invaluable, but it's not gonna do, it's not like the, the most important thing when we're talking, when we're trying to accomplish the goal that's in front of us.
Uh, Tony, thanks for putting this up. You know, I think this slide probably describes things the best. Uh, again, I mentioned earlier before the slide came up is if you think of this area as a bathtub, the star that's over by the women's softball field, by that walkway, is the lowest point in this area. That's the drain of the bathtub. Okay, so all the water is going towards that section, towards that area. Um, Josh, you mentioned that these two pumps have a capacity of pumping about five-hundred-thousand gallons an hour. Um, so picture it this way, I, I don't know what this area is here. Let's say it's ten acres. Let's say it's ten acres. Well, as I said before, one acre foot of water, that is one acre with one foot of water on top of it, is three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand gallons. So let's say it's ten acres. So we have what?
Three million something gallons.
Three million somewhat gallons of water.
Three-point-two million.
Three-point-two million gallons of water. If you have one foot of water over this whole area, divided by the five-hundred-thousand, that's how long it's gonna take you to pump that down.
Six hours, in theory.
Right. Uh, until you get that pumped down, you're gonna have flooding in all the other areas. So I think that's the right thing to do, um, Tony, in combination with clearing, uh, um, the, the ditches as best you can, um, and maintaining them over the years. I think that's the best solution you're going to get. And it doesn't stop traffic. Everything is underground. Um, you can pull the pumps up on a high area on the hot road.
Yeah, I think this is a, this, this picture here, where you see this car driving down the hot road, um, highlights what you're talking about. We can actually, we can deploy the pumps on the hot road, uh, instead of having to back them, you know, down Ward Road or Fox Hill Road in water. Uh, so that's a huge advantage. Um, another big advantage is, is, is that they're away from, um, the homes in the area. So if they're running overnight, they're not disturbing folks as much. Um, but it also, uh, provides us that quick access, um, to a very low spot in the area, so.
Yeah, so Tony, is that top picture, that's, that's where the ball, that's where the parking lot is, right?
This, uh, this is the parking lot here where my mom. And this, where right here is where we're talking about putting that base.
Right, that's the drain of the, that's the drain of the tub right there. And it's as Josh said, the elevations on that outfall at, um, Castle Road just don't work. Even in the hot water, doesn't flow uphill.
Dennis, Dennis, you were, you were there, uh, when, 2018. Do you think, I mean, what's your opinion of, of this idea here or what of this strategy? You gotta unmute yourself there.
I got you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, great. I, I think, I think, um, talking through it and having a little bit of, uh, understanding about the existing system, I think this is the, uh, the path of least existence here without, uh, spending a tremendous amount of money, throwing a lot of good money at the bad at this point. I think the original thought process on that, on that eighteen-inch, um, outfall pipe was gonna be the, the easy solution and the most common sense solution. However, uh, you know, what you did, you do diligence, um, it, it proved out otherwise. Um, so I think, I think at this point, um, again, to Mark's point on, on going to the drain of, of the bathtub, that, that is the common sense solution at this point. Well, I agree, I, I agree with the, uh, the effort.
Tony, do you want to open it up to, um, everybody?
Yes, so, let me see. I'm gonna try to do this with, uh, keeping the screen up. Allow participants to unmute themselves. So what I'll do is I will go, um, I'm, I'm gonna go to Christine first, because I know, you know, she, I, I know she's been, um, uh, she, you know, she was the one who was asking for this, for this to get onto the meeting. So Christine, you should be able to.
Thank you, Tony. I'm on. Can you hear me? Okay, so thank you for putting us on the agenda. Um, I had a couple of, quite a few questions. Uh, firstly, uh, has an elevation study been done? Not just us kind of walking it and thinking about it. Have you done an elevation study of this entire neighborhood as well as the ditch system from our neighborhood to Bear Pond?
Uh, we looked at the elevation study that was completed, um, uh, prior to the last time the ditch, the ditch work was, uh.
Two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and eleven. So the information that we utilized from that, from that, uh, study was the low areas in this neighborhood. We didn't, you know, not so, obviously the, the depth of the ditch itself is, has changed, right? So, but the other information of the elevations in this area are, are still fairly accurate.
Okay, you know, I've lived here for a very long time and I will say that it's hard for me to picture the spot that you're designating as the lowest place in the neighborhood. In two thousand and eighteen, when we had all that water, you did set up a portable pump, actually big pumps, ten-inch pumps right in that area, and you pumped. But you then had to move those pumps right across from where, um, your parents live, Tony, to remain, get the remainder of the neighborhood emptied out. So that is not the lowest point, or if it is, there is no current way for water to get there from the neighborhood. Because this area in yellow is lower than the area in orange or red, for sure. Um, you remember, Tony, and Dennis, you can jump in as well, and other neighbors who were there, you could not pump the water from that spot. You had to move that pump over to the park right in the. You could not pump the water from that spot. You had to move that pump over to the park, right in the corner. By the park, uh, by the entrance to the parking lot in order to drain the remaining, remaining water from. The area. In addition, once you started doing the pumping here, we had golf balls coming into the neighborhood. All from the ditch, from the golf course, because we are the lowlands. Water flows downhill, you're absolutely right, Mark. And once you started pumping our area, we started taking on water from the golf course. So I think, you know, I I applaud the pumps. I worked really hard with the town and with Dennis to get the portable pumps. But I'm not certain that without an elevation study and or. Some real work to connect this yellow area to that area, so water drains there, that any of that will be helpful.
Um, Christine, let me, Tony, let me just jump in quickly here. Christine's right to a certain extent. Um. The corner of the parking lot in Ward Road with that star is at the beginning of that ditch. And we've discussed this, um, you, they, they'll also need to make. Probably put a pipe under the entrance of the parking lot. Over to the edge, and they have an open trench that goes down to the uh other star, star by the walkway. So you're right in that regard, Christine.
I I'm not exactly sure. So you're talking about the corner of Castle Road and the parking lot? The war, I'm sorry, the corner of Ward Road and the parking lot, and then a drain over. Okay.
Right across from Blasagin's house, it looks like.
But I will still say that most of the water does not drain in the neighborhood to that corner either. Our storm drains are all directed to go to the corner of Castle and Fox Hill Road to that gravity. Outfall at twenty-nine Castle Road, because that's the system was designed, so in this plan.
That go, and that goes over to the parking lot.
So, some of it. Let me jump in. Christine, looking, we did do this, a study of the existing stormwater drain system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you have stormwater system that runs towards Castle Road. On Fox Hill Road, that then takes a right behind into the backyard of Christian Howard's house.
Mm-hmm.
From that point there, there's an eighteen inch um brick.
Right.
That, uh, or culver, whatever you want to call it, that goes from here to Castle Road. And then there's a thirty inch pipe that goes from here to this corner of Ward.
Correct.
Um. Based on the. The height levels of, or the depths of the, of the uh. These, these spots here, this is lower than the Castle Road um. Manhole, and both are lower than this spot in Christian's backyard. So the water, what happens? Again, the water's gonna act differently throughout the de-watering process. When the, when the entire area is flooded, it's gonna go in a different direction than as you are. So when, as you said, once you start de-watering it, now the water is able to flow in a different direction. Um, so that's why you have to have this multi-phase approach of how you're gonna. So we could even utilize, you know, unfortunately, going to the Castle Road manhole like we did back in twenty eighteen. It's right in the neighborhood, it shuts down Castle Road unfortunately, but that could serve. You know, once you start really getting the certain, you know, the the flooded water. Out of this area, but it's in the system of the stormwater system. You, you know, we could set up a pump here to help pull water that's heading in that direction, as well as a pump here that's heading in this direction. Um, when this entire area is flooded though. You can't get a pump to this corner of Castle.
Correct, correct.
And and. You know, and sometimes you can't even get into this part. It's either here or here.
Right, so that.
But the problem was it wasn't making it past the ditch. That's the problem. Is there any way we could turn that, the old rushes, the ditch there into the rip rack gathering area? So it comes from the softball field ditch you want to dig, and it comes from Ward Road. Could you do the work in there? In front of um Rich's, uh, from Rich's house down to um. Uh, the corner of Castle Way. Yeah, could we clear all that out and do a rip rack in there and raise the pumps in there? Cause that's almost like a middle portion of both ways the water was was coming.
So we, we've cleaned out, we, you saw what, you've probably seen what Zach's already done at the tip, uh, at the corner there. Um, the, an idea would be to do something similar of that nature where this other star is. Uh, and then obviously regular maintenance of this ditch off, um, you know, like the rest of the system. But you're not gonna get, when this entire place is full, you can't get to that spot. So you start here, you start at the new spot over by the playground. As it drains, you work your way in or out, however the way, however which way the water is allowing you to get your equipment.
The idea.
So, can I ask um back to that, Tony, uh, in term, it depends on the storm itself. Sometimes we get water just from Castle Road. And it doesn't get to the point of inundation, inundation in the parking lot and by the playing fields. We get a lot of water from Castle Road, so we really do need a, a pumping solution. That addresses that inner yellow circle and the orange circle and the red circle, not just one solution. So I think Michael is right, we need another pump out place. The other piece that I think is very important is that the town has the right and the obligation to maintain. That easement at twenty-nine Castle Road, and we can set up. Prior to it getting inundated, that pump and that area never floods, it's high and dry in every storm. We used it during two thousand and eighteen. We don't want to be at the point of inundation. We don't want all millions of gallons to fill up. We want to start pumping. Before the tide, before the next tide tide, and it does recede. At the Lynn Harbor side, the water does recede between tides, and that is very possible to do. What happened in two thousand and eighteen is we had six successive flooding tides, and we did not start pumping until after the storm. And that was the word that was used, which, you know, I was concerned about in my email to all of you, recovery. We, I like Zach Taylor's comment, we need to be proactive. We need to have pumping start. During the storm as soon as we can, and we can't just work from that outer red line. We've got to start where we're protecting property and people.
So Christine, so let me, so your first point was. When it only inundates the yellow area and not the red area, we need to be able to get in there.
Absolutely.
Where there's a star in that corner.
What if we're already in there up on, up on a, a lift or like you talked about platform?
Yeah, let me, let me uh, let me get through it, and then I'll come to you. Um, if if we have the ability to access that area with our pumps. We'll be able to put a suction hose in that area, and we can run the discharge to this new basin. That goes under the hot road. We have enough discharge hose to make that length.
But I, I, I guess my point is, I did request prior to the last storm that we be set up and uh prior to the storm with the pumps ready. And and the hose is ready, because it does take time, and once we're inundated, you're right, we cannot get the pumps in there to do their job. And then all those properties took the brunt of all that water.
So. So respectfully, Christine, I don't mean to interrupt, I I'm getting to that second point you made.
Okay.
When, if you envision um sinking a bowl in a tub of water. And that water's flowing in to that bowl over the edge of the, over the, over the edge. There is no pump. That's gonna keep up with that flow. We will not, I you, and I know it's hard, there. It, when you see water coming down Castle Road, it doesn't mean, it does not mean that the town hasn't done their job. The water, let, the flow of water from the ocean coming into this area cannot be prevented. It will happen, let me, let me keep going.
We agree, we know that.
You don't. You, putting the pumps, when, when that storm is coming, you don't know if it's gonna fill up the yellow area, the orange, or the red. You don't know ahead of time.
Eighty eighty percent of the time we do, Tony.
No, you don't, Chris, you don't know how, how much it's gonna expand.
No, not how much, but how, how it's gonna flow is is pretty standard.
Agreed, but the point I'm making is. I'm not gonna put a pump. Uh, on the edge of the yellow line before a storm comes.
No.
And then it, and then that storm comes and it ends up filling up the orange or the red. I won't be able to access that equipment.
I agree. I'm saying that the town has an easement at twenty-nine Castle Road that stays high and dry. I have pictures of it, we all have pictures of it during the flooding. We, that is where we pumped during two thousand and eighteen. You could set up the pumps there, and if it looks like we are gonna be, you know, needing to move them out, we can move them out, but. I think we have an obligation to have some form of drainage. Yeah, I, you know, we keep talking about this as being a swimming pool in a bowl. It is because there's no plug to be pulled. There's no way for this water to go unless you manually pump it out. So I would like us to be proactive and set the pumps up, and I would also like to ask. Is there a long-term plan for, for the, this as well, or is this the plan?
So the pumps that we have. Uh. I mean, you can run them at any rate that you want, but the manhole at Castle Road. Is only as productive as the system, the size and the, and the efficiency of the system heading to that manhole. You have an eighteen inch pipe from Christian Howard's backyard heading to that manhole. Um, you have a thirty inch pipe from that spot going towards Ward Road.
Okay.
So you can put a pump into that manhole, which we, you know, there is absolutely. A circumstance where we would utilize that. There is a storm or even a phase during the de-watering of any storm where we would need to util- utilize that. But when the water is coming over and filling this area up. There is no, uh. The water doesn't get into that manhole in a, in a way that a pump is going to combat. The volume that is filling up this entire neighborhood. That's my point.
Yeah, that, I think, I think what Christine's saying though is, is even when that happens, Tony, there's, there's, there's still no way to get rid of that water. And you're, you're pumping, I, and and this is part, part I don't understand. And and Mark, you may, you guys may think that that, that pipe's irrelevant going across Castle Road, but it's an overflow. So if the water backs up, what we are talking about is Short Beach, now the water's got nowhere to go, so that's an overflow. So I'll give you an example. I I had a study done, it takes three feet of water in my yard before it moves. So that means the water on the other side of Ward Road goes nowhere, so we're pumping our water. Clear across town to Bear Pond, which, which, okay. But I'm, I'm no engineer, but I know if I fill up, if I fill up my water in my sink and I unplug it, the last part that goes to top. So why, we have a beach that's right across the street that we could pump the whole, our, our whole area out, which is one of the severe areas in the hot. But we gotta go clear across town to, to Bear Pond, I think is ridiculous. I don't know what engineer come up with that plan, but. I don't know, it's, it, it, it seems like an awful long way to go.
Well, what we're talking about is, um. Okay, so the spot that we're talking, the engineering plan that we put together across from the women's softball field. Is not uh fed by a stormwater pipe system. It would actually be a basin that is. Uh, Zach, what did we say, a foot? Um, the bottom of it would be a foot above sea level, so this makes it that, this low area. When the, when this neighborhood is flooded with a foot of water, two feet of water. It's not going through a storm drain to get there, it's naturally flowing. We can, so there's a ton more water flowing to that area that we can use the pumps to de-water. The drainage, the manhole that you're talking about on Castle Road. Is fed by a storm drain system that is only as a um. Good as the pipes heading to it.
Correct.
So it's limited in a sense, so it's not invaluable, but it's not. It's, it's only valuable during certain phases of de-watering. Or during certain storms or certain flood levels. When you're talking about this whole area. You gotta try and capture the biggest amount of it as fast as you can. Once you get it down to a certain amount, you can then move those pumps. Into the next spot, maybe it's at the corner of the parking lot, maybe it's the corner of the dead end that heads to the pump house. Or maybe it's Castle Road um manhole, but. Those, those three spots. Are not um. Preventative spots. Those are not spots that you're gonna be uh pumping from before. Um, or to prevent flood, that's, those are phases of the de wa- de-watering process.
So basically, it's recovery.
So, could I say something?
Go ahead.
Um, so just, the idea here is to move out. We start inside and then move out as we're pushed by the water. So the idea isn't to allow this place to flood, and then. This pumping system off of the hot road is basically when all is lost.
Thank you, thank you.
I mean, that's the furthest point we're gonna be. That's when we've been pushed out of Castle Way, Ward Road. The manhole that has some merit that, you know, you're talking about. You know, we can set up there during a storm, you know, before a storm, and and see how far we get. Again, the storm is gonna determine how far we're pushed out.
So. I, thank you, Zach, I appreciate that, and I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just, you know. Reinforcing what Zach said, you start at the low point. The, the lowest point, and you don't move outward unless you're forced to by the rising waters.
Correct.
And if you're pumping at a. You know, if your pump capacity exceeds the ingress from the ocean, you luck out and the whole neighborhood never gets flooded.
Correct, and I, I'd like to add that these are portable pumps, they're on wheels, and where you're looking at the star by Castle Way, you're right at the. Bottom of, almost of Fox Hill, you know, the hill to Fox Hill Road. A quick boom, you're up the hill. I mean, if you needed to move them out, you can still move them out, but. My point is, I'd like them to be set up. I don't want to wait until we look like all is lost, as Zach said. Before we begin pumping, and I disagree that pumping during the storm wouldn't be effective. I think it's very effective. I think we all got hit the first tide and we pumped and it went into the drains, and then we got hit a second tide and we all pumped ourselves and it went back and filled the drains. And if someone had come down at the third, between the second and third tide, and pumped out our drains and pumped out those ditches. When tide number three came and four and five, we would not have been at that place where all was lost. We let it, six tides, six tides.
We were overwhelmed, we were overwhelmed.
Because we weren't prepared, we were not prepared.
No, mother na- mother nature captured us.
But if we had a pump set up for the future, and I'm not laying blame, Dennis, but moving forward. We have two portable pumps that I worked really hard to get that article with you, Dennis and Selectman, to get that money to help our neighborhood and our town. And so I would like to make sure that when we know a storm is coming, they are set up and ready and deployed. And if we need to pull back, we pull back to the orange and the red. I agree with what Zach is saying, we work inside out. And wherever those inside points are, whether it's in the corner of Ward Road or by Castle Way, we are pumping. And we are getting rid of what's in those storm drains, because everything drains to that point at Ward Road, apparently. You've got a thirty inch drain from Howard's house to Castle, uh, to Ward Road. That would be a good place to have that portable pump ready to go and pumping, so that when our storm drains fill up. And the next tide comes, we're ready to tackle it, because we have a plate for the water to go. What happened in two thousand and eighteen can't keep happening. It's unfair to the people who live here, it's unfair to the town. Another question. How, how long do you perceive this is going to take for permitting for this? Do we have permits to move, to do all this that you're planning to do? Do we have permits in place?
Before, before we answer that question, um, you know, that was. You, you said a lot there, Christine. Um. And Dennis said a lot too. I, I, we cannot. I, I, we cannot, we cannot approach every, uh, we cannot compare every forecasted storm to what happened in two thousand and eighteen. You know, from me on the FDP committee.
Well, hey, with all, with all due respect, I've had five, and and not not two thousand and eighteen. These are routine storms. I would, and I was close, this close from it going around the corner. The last storm, once it goes around the corner, forget it. And it all goes to my house because it's all pitched that way. I'm not saying it it all goes to Castle Castle Way, but I happen to be that 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 main drain there. And and then, once that gets flooded, once it gets flooded over a short beach, it goes nowhere.
Right, so, um.
So the, so the, so what Christine's saying is that that pump, that pump that goes across Castle Way, the pump that goes across takes care of, really takes care of Castle, Castle Road and Fox Hill Road.
Right. What what pump are you referring?
The one that we laid, I don't know, Dennis, the one that we laid across the street there, you know?
The thirty inch?
Yep. Yeah.
The thirty inch from Howard's yard to the corner of, you know, Ward Road, where you put the new, new pump area?
So, you know, before we go any further, I want, you know, there's.
This is what you're saying. I mean, I, no one's disagreeing here. We're talking about two things here. We're talking about hydrology and hydraulics. The hydraulics of this situation are the size of the pipes. The hydrology of the situation is which way is the water flowing, right? You have to look at the both. You have to look at the hydrology and the hydraulics of the situation.
Mm hmm.
And Christian is absolutely right. The wa, the lo, a low point in that whole area is where everything is draining in terms of the hydraulics is his backyard.
Mm hmm.
Uh, and it would probably make sense to put a pump at at the, at first, right at the corner of Ward Road and the entrance of the parking lot. That pump can just pump over to that other pump, uh, that's set up on the hot road.
Right.
Right?
Mm hmm. Yes.
And they could be, and they could be pumping in tandem. And at some point, if you get overwhelmed on the one of Ward Road, you have to move it over to, move it over to the hot road.
Right.
I agree. It's on wheels. I mean, it's portable. So I I think that's a better plan. And my concern was, you know, that we're not just looking at this as recovery.
Christine, it's the same plan.
That's not what I heard tonight.
No, not me either.
That's not what we heard. So I just wanna make sure we're clear because it's, it is.
I'm telling, I'm, first of all, you, I would never recommend anything that would not help this neighborhood.
I know that, Tony.
Never.
Your father would be mad at you.
If I believe, if I believed it was gonna help, we're doing it.
Okay, so what will help? Thank you.
Explain, what I'm trying to explain to you is that when water is coming over the the dune and flooding, you're not pumping. You're not pumping during that time.
I disagree.
Tides, yet you disagree.
I think between tides, between tides.
Between tides, in between tides, you could do that. In between tides, you could do that. But you're not, but when you don't know where the flood level is going to, uh, in other words, you're not gonna set up the pumps along Castle Road, um, because it's gonna fill up the yellow circle first.
But I thought you.
That goes against what Mark, what Mark just said. Mark just said that's the best place for the pump.
Right.
I don't know. What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is it's gonna fill up yellow first, if you're looking at this graphic.
Mm hmm.
So it obviously doesn't make sense to set up the pumps over by, um, by the hot road at first. But if you, if the stormwater fills up this entire basin, you're not gonna be able to get into the, to that yellow circle.
Well, Tony, I I I, I'm gonna jump in. I wanna, I think you need to set one up initially at Ward Road and that corner of the, uh.
Thank you. Yes.
Um, part of the lot.
You're absolutely right.
For two reasons. One, um, I don't think you have the discharge to go all, and then you're gonna be discharging out over the hot road or someplace like that. You wanna set it up there, discharge it into, next to the walkway by the girls' ball field. Have a pump up in the hot road there, too, right? And pump them simultaneously, in between tides, if you want. But have them pumping all the time.
Yeah, look, yeah, when that tide draws back.
Right, and if the water comes over too much, take the pump out of Ward Road and put it up on the, over the other one.
That's right.
That's what I would do.
Because, because our storm drains, once they fill up, then there's nowhere for it to go. But if you empty our drains, it's the same concept as what you do at the golf course and before storms, trying to empty out the golf course and the ditch system. We're doing that whenever it's possible between tides. And there was recession of tide in two thousand and eighteen on the Lynn Harbor side. It took a little longer on the short beach side, but the tide does go down enough to help the neighborhood so that we don't end up in that situation.
I think Tony and Zach have have this right, have the concept right here. Um, I think, um, the operational end of it needs to be tweaked a little. Um, but I think what they, what they're showing here is absolutely right. I don't think it makes sense to put a pump on Castle Road. If you're gonna put one there, um, early, put it on Ward Road, put it right there in that corner. Um, that's what's gonna do the most good. Um, as Christian said, there's a thirty inch, uh, so the hydraulics coming in. It's a thirty inch coming from Christian's house to that area. It's only an eight inch going the other way. So, but, um.
We just need some relief.
Doing it this way.
Yeah, it it, like you said, like you said, Mark, we're we're just trying to keep the water moving. We're not, you know, it that's all we need to, we know we can't stop the water.
I thi, I I think, I think Tony and Zach have this perfectly right, uh, in terms of, you know, these locations where to set up the pumps initially. And as the top, as the flooding advances, you have options to do. But, uh, I think they have it right.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. Like, I think the point I'm trying to make is when, when you're gearing up for a storm and it says, high tide's at midnight, we got astronomical, um, high tide, you know, you don't know yet what flooding you're gonna get.
You can tell by the wind direction.
You go, yeah, but you don't know, you don't, you you may know, okay, we're likely to get flooding. You don't know how much it's gonna be.
Right.
How much it's gonna fill up the neighborhood, which which spot you're gonna be in yet. So, you know, I, I agree with you that you have your stuff ready to go immediately, um, so that you can start de-watering immediately as soon as that tide recedes. But the part that I'm I'm having trouble and I don't wanna commit to is this, um, setup of a pump and a hose prior to a storm actually coming over the the water because you don't know yet. You have to assess that situation live. Now, you can have it right there, ready to go. And you can have these different approaches, uh, planned out. And you, and you, and you hit them as soon as that water, that tide recedes. But you're not gonna, you're not gonna know, you're not gonna know yet, e- even if it's, you know, you have to assess that live, is the point I'm making.
Tony, I agree with that because, uh, you know, you, you know, you, you're gonna, what's gonna happen is, this is Zach's job, right? Zach's job is to decide when and when to deploy the pumps. Um, you know, you know, we can't, I don't think we wanna have a situation where anybody watches the TV news and says, oh, you know, it's gonna rain tomorrow. I demand, I demand that these pumps are gonna be in in place. I think it's Ja, Zach's job to decide when to deploy the pumps. We don't.
You don't live in this area, Josh.
I used to, Christians.
I know, but.
We're gonna try to, I mean, I think we're all on the same page.
Can I just, uh, address that, Josh? I don't think anyone in this neighborhood who has lived through the number of floods, not just the big ones, but there have been many in between, ever would just call you up because it was raining and tell you to deploy pumps. We've been pumping ourselves out and helping with this for years. So I I think that's a little bit of an insult to the neighbors. But beyond, but beyond that, but beyond that, that was insulting. But beyond that, I just wanna ask Zach a question. How long does it take to deploy the pumps and the hoses? So you're set up to deal with a situation like that. Do you know, Zach?
Yeah, um, which, where am I? Am I going to that Ward Road?
Say you're going to that Ward Road. How long does it take you to set up the pumps?
Forty-five minutes.
And and that includes all of the hoses that go as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Forty-five minutes.
So where are you going with that water? Are you going over the hot road or are you going over?
No, I'm going, I'm going into the basin and then I'm gonna pump out with the second pump.
Yeah, that's exactly right, Zach. Could I suggest this, uh, as another remedial effort? And and this is on the hydraulics end of it. Where that pump is at the corner, where the ditch begins at Ward Road, as I suggested earlier, I would go underneath there. Uh, Tony, if you could put your, um, pointer there, across the entrance of the, yeah. Put a, put a thirty inch pipe under the road over there and then have an open ditch coming down to that other pump. Okay? That's the hydraulic. So when the water starts coming in, it's gonna flow down there naturally. Right now.
Along with the, along with the pump?
Yeah, along with the pump.
Okay.
Um, I think, I think that, that would help a lot.
The open ditch goes along, along the parking, like in front of the parking lot?
Yes.
Probably a hole, yeah.
Yeah. Open ditch there, like, you know, a rip rap ditch.
This is Gene, and and I am one of those people that lived there for a number of years and experienced exactly what these folks are talking about. I think right now that the thing I'm hearing tonight, and 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 I think it's the right thing. I think the pumps, their placement and the timing of those pumps is so critical to this. It's tantamount to making this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
Not, yeah, I know you are, but I think there's a much greater need beyond this, too.
Yes, there is.
Uh, that is a study to determine, because we're talking about levels rising, not not reduced level, levels of of ocean water.
Yeah, they've been more frequent. You're right.
Yeah, much more frequent, they're gonna be a lot, lot higher.
Yeah.
You know, a foot in 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 this environment is is gonna be huge. So at the same time, we're providing a relief down there, we need to be doing something for prevention purposes. And I don't know what that is. I just know that over a period of time, a short period of time, we need to take a look at that.
Right, I I agree. You know, I, I think that's very important. But, um, I I think we also need some kind of a long term solution to just regular drainage. These are circumstances, right? Thank you, Gene. Because these are circumstances that hopefully don't happen that often. But we do have heavy rainstorms and all of that where we are still inundated with water. Um, you know, so we we don't have any drainage for this whole area of town because it's blocked. So, uh, you know, and I I think it's been studied and studied to death. I mean, I hate to say it, but here's like a Lynn item following the nineteen ninety-one storm. I hope you can all see it. And I'll just read you a quote in here from Selectman Lombard when, um, he basically said that, you know, uh, we had, uh, engineering plans for a multimillion dollar drainage project were drawn up after the blizzard of seventy-eight but never implemented, according to Lombard. They call for rebuilding the drainage systems at Kelly Greens and in Fox Hill Road area. Both areas are under several feet of water again in nineteen ninety-one. And he went on to say that, you know, um, you know, he didn't know what happened. It just, uh, stopped. I don't know what happened. Here it is. For some reason, the plans were developed and on the table. And for some reason, it just stopped and there was no follow through, said the selectman. This is in ninety-one and referring back to seventy-eight. So my concern is we have studied it to death, we've talked it to death. We need something to happen in terms of a permanent drainage drainage solution in addition to this immediate or Band-Aid approach to big, big water. So I I I know we talked about that this summer when we met with the neighborhood. And I know this is a long night and we're not gonna have time to do that tonight. But we do need to meet again and maybe we need to, because this is a complex issue, we should do this with our neighborhood, um, outside of a Board of Selectmen meeting so that we, or, you know, at your convenience, so that we can really start to look at like a more long term solution, which Mr. Canty has referred to as well, and I appreciate.
Well, I'd like to, I just, um, you know, you're looking at, uh, when you're, when you're talking about this issue, it's resiliency, which we're attacking with the MVP grant and hopefully looking at something on the Castle Road side. But obviously, we're limited because of the housing situation. So resiliency is one, which is preventive.
Mm hmm.
Um, then there's the, uh, recovery side of it, which is what we're talking about here, by building multiple locations for us to pump from, um, when, you know, based on different types of storms. Um, and then, like you said, uh, consistent, um, uh, drainage, uh, such as the outfall pipe on Castle Road and the ditch system that runs towards Bear Pond, making sure that's set up appropriately.
Yeah, because we don't run to Bear Pond and we all know that. It just sits and it sits, the water sits. Um, and every time it gets wider, it just holds more water. It doesn't direct, so it's very important that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because, uh, you know, what's better than an eight, just an eighteen inch pipe is also a ditch system that works appropriately. So having both is gonna, gonna help with that long term effect. Um, and all of those items, we have initiated pro, progress it since August of two thousand and eighteen. So I completely understand that, uh, you know, that it, this has been talked about for years and years and years. Um, in the last two years, we've, we've, we have taken, uh, you know, a ton of steps forward helping with this problem. And, you know, it's not just here. It's, um, at the, uh, Little Nahap Playground area, at White Way, at Fur Bush. We have these, you know, this, a storm of this magnitude cripples the entire town. And you know what? If we don't, if we can't get past Little Nahap Playground, we can't get people out of town.
Right.
So, you know, we we've focused a lot of resources and attention on this area and we're gonna continue to do that. Um, I understand it's been a long time, but I do wanna tell that side of the story a little bit more often that we are making progress and we're getting there.
Tony, let me, we get, we have to move on. But I think, I think, Tony, I think that you and Zach have done a great job in in this initial step. Um, you know, I think permanent, when people talk about a permanent solution with, first of all, we're talking about property that is below sea level in in some, in in many areas. We're below sea level. We're not gonna fix that with drainage. The only way you're gonna fix that is with pumping.
Well, I I would have to disagree that most of the homes are well above sea level. We've had elevation studies done for our flood insurance and we are not below sea level.
Well, you're below, you're below.
Our homes, our homes.
You're below sea level during storm events.
Right.
Okay, that's what I'm referring to.
Right, okay.
During storm.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, you're, you're below sea level during storm events. So you're not gonna prevent that from happening. And drainage, and drainage dishes is not gonna prevent that from happening. So you're looking at a pumping situation. And what is the most effective and efficient pumping situation? I think this is a great step forward. Uh, the only other thing I can think about is to take Lowlands Park and make it Lowlands Lake. I mean, I, I.
Thousand percent.
You could do something like that.
Have you looked at that whole wooded area that, you know, is along Nahap Road as a catchment area? I mean, that's where you're talking about putting.
A ditch, yeah. There used to be a ditch there. When I grew up, there was.
I think that was much more, less filled in years ago.
Yeah, there was a ditch there at one point.
Real quick, and I know you, I know you wanna, I know you wanna move on, uh, just, uh, for Zach and and I know you, it's your first year. When it gets real cold and we have a storm like we had last time and the snowplows plow in the, plow, plow over the, the, um, what do you call it, the drainage? It freezes. When the water hits it, it freezes and makes it ice, so they don't work at all. So if, I don't care if they, I don't want, I know they, you know, they're busy plowing. But if they don't plow them, it's actually better if they, because when they plow them, it makes it worse. If you know what I mean. What, what, do you understand that? When they plow them in, the water hits it when it's cold and freezes them.
Mm hmm.
It'll work. The water won't go down. I'm not asking you to shovel out every, every.
So you're talking about on the street, the drains that are in the street that lead to the storm drain system, Christian?
Correct, like, like the last storm. I'm not, again, I knew you guys are busy. I had to dig, I dug out the one in front of Mike's house because the water was just about reaching the corner of Fox Hill and Castle. But once I got those two drains dug out, it 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 drained it. But had it reached the corner. But had it reached the corner, forget, then it goes to my house, you know what I mean? It, it, it's, it's because the water, and when it's real cold, below 32 degrees, the ice in the, in the water, uh-
Yeah, I, I stopped that day and helped you out.
Yeah, no, I, I, that's what I'm saying. Can, can we, i- i- instead, instead of waiting till it gets to the corner?
Yeah, we just, we just, we, we let that slip, we let that slip. We were, we were dealing with issues over on Willow, and, and by the time I had gotten to you, it was, you had already gotten to it. But we're gonna keep a better eye, we're gonna keep a much better eye on those catch basins in particular during storm events.
All right.
Thank you, thank you Zach, and, uh, Tony, and, uh, Mark, Gene, Josh, for putting this on the agenda. It would be nice to have a follow-up as we go along with this, you know, just to timeframes and where we're at. That would be helpful for the neighbors. We are very interested.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks guys.
We're hoping to go, we're hoping to go to Concom, um, soon Christine, on this, on this, um, additional, you know, area to pump from. Um, it shouldn't, I mean, I don't, I don't, we don't think it's gonna, uh, take too long because it's not a permanent outfall pipe. Um, so it should just be local permitting, but, um, uh, we may need to go to, you know, that may be some of the, the funding source, maybe that town meeting article for the construction. But, um, you know, hopefully it's shovel-ready by then.
Well, one quick question, it was in the chat earlier. I had a citizen's petition to have some funding for permitting and, and implementation of a long-term draining solution, drainage solution. You guys asked me to pull that permit. I mean, that article, um, one town meeting was going to be, you know, smaller. Um, will that be going back on for?
Yes.
I know you're talking about doing something additionally, but will that petition, uh, also be going on?
Yeah, so, uh, the Board of Selectmen, you know, our commitment was that the Board of Selectmen would sponsor a borrowing article. You know, it'll probably be similar language, so.
Okay, I'm just wondering, is there something I need to do before January 31st to make sure that there's something in there?
Nope.
Tony, maybe we could, maybe we could draft an article and pass it, pass it by, um, Christine, uh-
I'd appreciate that.
Before the 31st.
I'd appreciate that, thank you Mark.
Even, even if, even if that deadline came and gone, the Board of Selectmen will be able to, to include something. So, so it will definitely be included in the, in the warrant.
Okay, I would love to take a peek, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you, thanks guys.
Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Good night.
Tony, I know we have some people with Citizens Forum, um, a couple of questions here. So let's tell, we, we have executive session we have to go into too, so, it's getting late. Um, uh, let me quickly, I see Ken Colangelo asked, uh, four questions. One, will the RKG East Point Financial Impact Report be available for public viewing? If you could put that up tomorrow, Tony, that would be great.
Okay.
On the website. Uh, he also asks, are there any concrete plans for eminent domain public information session mentioned, um, in past, uh, Board of Selectmen's meetings? We're trying to hammer down a date, hopefully it's gonna be this month. Um, Tony's working with the attorneys that would participate in that. And hopefully we can get that done this month. Uh, number three, uh, will there be another Board of Selectmen's meeting before the 21st? Yes, I believe there is, isn't there Tony?
No.
No?
The next, the, the next, our next Board of Selectmen meeting is the 21st. Uh, the, the Concom meeting is the night before, I think, Wednesday, the 20th? Let me look at a calendar.
Oh. Oh, I see what he's saying, I misread it then, okay.
Concom is Wednesday, the 20th, Board of Selectmen would be the following night, the 21st.
Okay, all right. Okay, good. And then the last question was regarding testing. Per prior assurances on the Heart Preservation Trust gift reporting, could you disclose the amount? Um, yeah, I, I don't have a problem. We don't know what the amount is going to be, it depends on how many people, uh, participate in the testing. I think, Tony, it's running about $70 per person now?
It's $70 a test. We usually have to do about 50 tests an hour, so in a two-hour block, we're getting 100 tests, seven grand. So, um, if it maxes out, uh, it's gonna be somewhere around $14,000.
Okay. All right, uh, we have any other questions in the chat room?
Um, other questions that were part of the discussion?
Well, we just opened it up quickly, the Citizens Forum, and then we can get on.
Okay, so it's, uh, I, I believe participants have the ability to unmute themselves. So if you want to contribute in, um, Citizens Forum, just unmute yourself, announce your name, your home address, and, uh, your comment or question.
Well, that's good, that, thanks for refraining everybody, it's getting late, so, um, appreciate it. All right, what else is on the agenda? Anything, I don't have it in front of me here, Tony?
Um, a vote to enter into executive session.
Okay, you got that Josh?
Uh, I need a second. Well, I think I can make that one up on my own. Um, I don't have the legal words, but, uh-
But Josh, um, Dan Script could probably read it, and you could say so moved.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I can, I can read off something. Um, first, it needs to be a finding by the Chair that the discussions that we're going to have an executive session, if an open session, will be detrimental to the bargaining position of the, of the town. So, uh, did you make that finding there Mark?
Yes.
Okay, so with that finding, uh, then the Board of Selectmen, Josh will vote to move into executive session, um, in accordance with Master and Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss impending litigation regarding Players at Lies Inc., in accordance with MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with the town administrator. And finally, in accordance with Master and Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the lease of Kelly Greens Golf Course to R&amp;B Management.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's made, seconded, any further discussion? Having none, all in favor?
Josh, enter my.
Gene, Canty, I.
I call it a I. We have a motion to adjourn.
And we will not, we hope, we will not reconvene open session.
Okay, all right.
Okay, okay.
Sounds good, yeah.
Are we staying on the same Zoom call, or do we have a separate, uh?
Yeah, we can do that.
Um, Peter Fitzpatrick is on the line too, so he'd be instrumental with two of these subjects.
Okay, great. Thanks everybody for tuning in tonight. Thanks Zach.
Hold on one moment as I work this out.